Mine is on. Doesn't, there it is. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Let's call to order the meeting of the Merrimack Planning Board for Tuesday, August 3rd, 2021. Let me remind everyone that will address the board to make sure the microphones are turned on and you speak clearly into it so the folks at home can hear you. Applicants and any speaking members of the public, clearly identify yourself for the record so that we can get you caught in the minutes. And announcement, our next planning board meeting after tonight is currently scheduled for August 17th, 2021, at 7:00 PM in this room. Let's see, Nelson, you are an alternate tonight, so let's make you a voting member. We'll put you in for Neil. That gives us five voting members tonight. That completes the housekeeping business. Robert, do you have a planning and zoning administrators' report for us?
Just that the McLean-Jones lot line adjustment is not of regional impact.
What's the rule of the board with respect to that recommendation?
I couldn't hear him. Which one are we voting on?
That the...
Regional impact.
Which one?
The Jones-McLean two-lot subdivision, or lot line adjustment actually is not of regional impact.
Also move.
Motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstaining? Five, zero, zero to uphold the staff's recommendation on that one. Anything else, Robert?
No, Mr. Chair.
Do any members of the board have any questions for staff? Seeing none, let's move on to the next item on our agenda, which is Garrett Burby as the applicant and 385 DW Highway LLC as the owner. Continued review for consideration of a waiver of full site plan review to permit a mixed-use development consisting of a single-family dwelling and contractor storage yard. The parcels located at 385 Daniel Webster Highway in the C1 general commercial, Ock for Conservation, and elderly housing overlay districts. It's Tax Map 4D3, Lot 90, Case Planning Board 2021-10. It's continued from our July 20th, 2021 Planning Board meeting. Robert, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from Mr. Burby?
Yeah, just a way of recap, since the last time the applicant was before you, he has worked with staff and worked outside on his own to come up with a completely redesigned site plan that we feel, staff feels, does meet the spirit of a waiver of full site plan that he's asking for. As compared to the last meeting where there was confusion on the proposed garage, that has been removed at this time. So there is no external change being proposed with this application any longer. It is basically, the plan before you represents really an existing conditions plan to how he wants to, how the site looks today and essentially how he wants to operate it by making no external changes whatsoever. The only item that is something the board needs to look at tonight is there's a shelter logic structure that we've talked about before in these hearings that is shown on the plan. Staff does not have anything in our regulations that would prohibit such a structure, but I know the board had some concern over having a canvas temporary type structure on a, what amounts to a commercial site, but this is a bit unique, being that it is a mixed-use, that it is a residential as well as business, commercial site. So staff is asking the board to decide whether or not that building can remain as a temporary structure. For his, and we'll stress, for his residential use, not for the business use.
Thank you, Robert. Procedurally, we're right at the beginning with completeness and then a waiver of full site plan review if the board just so chooses, correct? Okay. Mr. Burby?
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
Good. I'm Garrett Burby of 385...
There you go.
DW Highway.
Great. Anything that you want to add to Robert's introduction, or?
No.
Okay. Board members, are you prepared to make a decision on completeness? Lynn, just got a hand up?
I'll move. We vote to accept the application as it's substantially complete and contains sufficient information to allow our board's jurisdiction.
All right. Is there a second for Lynn's motion?
Second.
Second by Counsel Healy. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a little problem with this plan. If we're talking about this plan that was included with this package today, if this is the plan we're being asked to approve, I have some issues with it.
So it is the one that we're being asked to approve. The vote we're taking is whether the application's complete. And so apply your judgment however you think fit to that first question, or ask questions if you want to, if you think that there's more information needed for the application.
To be complete.
Pardon?
To be complete.
Okay. I think there's more information needed on this plan. Now, if we're voting to say it's complete, then I can't ask for the additions later, right? Or can I?
It depends on what we're talking about, because the next thing that we would take up is the applicant's request to waive full site plan review, which may also encompass some of the things you think are not included on the plan.
Probably would, yes.
Right. And then it's up to the board to decide whether those things ought to be in or out, or...
Go for it.
Whatever. Does that make sense?
Yeah, okay.
Okay. With that in mind, are we prepared to vote on the motion to find the application complete? If so, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Five, zero, zero to find the application complete. Okay. Do the board members wish to have general discussion with the applicant?
Yes.
Please have at it.
Yes, I'd like to know a little more. At one time, we had a little discussion of what was going to happen here and that it was a residential use. It was also using it commercial, as a commercial office, as the sign indicates and so on. And the so-called on here, "storage shelter logic", is that the temporary structure that's in the back there now?
Yes.
It is, yeah.
Okay. And that's part of the residential usage, or, you know, or the office use?
No, residential.
Since we're allowing an office in here too, is that, is that the part of the request?
Where are you, the office, where are you referring to?
Inside the building.
Yeah, it's...
The office is in the building itself.
In my house. I have an office in my house, yes.
Yeah. So an office's approval is part of this. It's a...
A home use office.
Yeah. Okay. My questions with the site plan had to do with my discovery, or your discovery before me, of the lot line location being, are the adjacent property encroaching into this property? By the way, the lot line location is shown here.
Are you talking parking spaces?
Yeah.
Okay.
Those are on the adjacent property. And they're shown here on this property. If that line is represented, that dark line, I think is supposed to be the property line, but I can't tell for sure, because it doesn't say that. And there is no indicators where these corners are on that property, or what the corners are. Are there monuments there, or something to establish the position of these boundary lines?
How did you figure out where your boundaries were on the map, Mr. Burby?
Well, the company that I used did a, an aerial survey using satellite imagery and superimposed what the town had on file. So what did I do? I just relied on their resources.
Okay, gotcha. Gotcha. Okay, so it wasn't a surveyed plan, but it was an extrapolation from whatever existing plans they had available to them?
But there's no reference to those plans that's on this.
I believe there is a note referencing the plans. Number nine?
Nine. CDD Plan Number 601.
Yeah, so that reference would be to the Community Development Plan Number 601, which was for a previous use on the site at some point in time. I believe it might have been the first plan that you, the hand-drawn old, the old plan that Mr. Burby walked in with originally. I believe that's what that references.
But that wasn't part of the submittal tonight. And it should be part of the package if we're going to make it.
It's already approved, though.
Right.
Well, it's already approved.
That plan was already approved.
That plan was already approved. That's, it still should, if we're relying on it for the source of these informations, we should have a copy of that to refer to, right?
But we don't ever give all previous approved reference plans for all applications that come in, so I guess I'm confused by that.
Yeah, no, we don't. We don't usually have all the reference plans attached to a plan set.
I guess what troubles me is there's no way to find out where these boundaries are. And I guess that's what bothers me most.
Right. That, I would concur with that. That would, the only way to solve that at this point would be an actual on-the-ground survey. The previous plans would, I don't know, I don't remember if they were based on a survey. They may have been. But yeah, the only point, at this point, the only way to solve that would be an actual on-the-ground survey. If you're looking for definite location of the lot lines.
Well, yeah, I'm looking for a definite location of the lot lines because the neighbor seems to be intruding in here. And...
But wouldn't, but wouldn't that be a problem for the neighbor, not for this gentleman?
Well, I think it's both their problems.
I don't think so.
Overall, it does represent a civil issue, because Mr. Burby and Community Development have discussed this issue throughout this process too. And it does represent a civil issue if he wishes to pursue it independently with the neighbor to get their parking off of his property. But there's nothing that would prevent you from approving his use going... Their parking situation does not prohibit you from moving forward on his application, but he then would have to pursue that encroachment onto his land independently.
Well, that's why I wondered about the accuracy of that location, if it's really there. And if we're approving this, we're sort of saying it's there.
Potentially, we could certainly add a note to say that we are not approving or commenting on the accuracy of the boundary layout on the plan.
Yeah, I think, again, with the request being the waiver of full site plan, the boundary survey obviously would be one of the items being waived. So...
I agree with the notion that it's pretty normal for us to want to see where those boundaries are and have some connection to them. In the, in the context of a waiver of full site plan review with no physical changes to the exterior of the property, I don't really want to chase that down.
Yeah, well, I don't, I don't like approving it this way, frankly.
Understood.
Yeah.
Do you have other questions for the applicant or discussion? Or, Mr. Burby, do you want to respond to Nelson's concerns?
I really don't know how to respond to that.
Okay.
I don't think there's any issue.
The parking spaces that are shown on your plan as being your neighbor's parking spaces, which sort of start to encroach towards the street. When I look at this NRPC satellite photo, they've got a little bit different boundary, and it looks like the parking spaces are probably okay. If this was an accurate boundary, of course, we don't know whether, which one is which. How long has the neighbor's parking spaces been there?
Well, the previous owner, I don't know the answer to that question, but the previous owners had sent them an encroachment letter, which I have a copy of. I didn't know I may have needed that for tonight. But I, they, they reported that to me when I purchased this property, that they had started the process of encroachment and notifying the abutter.
Okay. I don't need to see your letter, but if you happen to recall the date that it was sent to the neighbors, that would be helpful to know.
I, I don't...
Roughly. What year?
I think 2017.
Okay, so relatively recently.
Yeah.
What is the business that's next door to you?
Dance studio.
That's the dance studio?
Yeah.
Okay. I think that there's a way for us to get to an ability to approve something that's got a potential encroachment from an abutting property, and our approval is not blessing that or acknowledging that it's proper or appropriate. And we've done that with some other properties as well. If you were encroaching on their property, that'd be a little different story. We can't give you permission to do that. But it's up to you if you wanted to give them permission to encroach on your property, or not. Nelson, did you have other details that you wanted to discuss or point out?
Just the only other detail was that the two spaces that are in front of the house, identified as two spaces, and then it says parking and signage setback. Presently, there is, parking is going on on the grass there. There's a grassy space that isn't paved. And that's where I've seen vehicles parking in the front of the house.
Is that a question?
What?
Do you have vehicles that park on the grass in front of, on the sides of your driveway?
No.
At DW Highway?
No.
Mr. Chairman, looking at the, this overhead, satellite, it looks like there's enough paved or gravel space in front of the house to do those two parking spaces. The grass is closer to the roadway.
Yes, but the cars are parking on the grass, is my point.
Well, they shouldn't do that. They've got two spaces on the, on the parking place.
Today, did you drive by my property, Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
There's no cars parking on the grass. I have no idea what you're talking about.
Well...
There, the parking spots that are there, the parking lot, there's two spaces that's paved, which I purchased that property. There were two spaces there. And if I wanted to park a car on the grass, which I won't do, there, there's two spaces in front of that front door. And they are both, I have a pickup truck there and a car. They're in, they're in the boundaries of a paved parking lot. There are not, there is no vehicle on the grass. I have no idea what you're talking about.
Well, I thought I saw grass underneath one of them, but...
So ultimately, with respect to parking on the grass, whether it exists or not, I mean, you know that you aren't supposed to, and so that can obviously be something that is discussed here and agreed to, that to the extent anybody ever parks on the grass, if you see a customer or somebody's car breaks down in front of your place, whatever, tell them to get off the grass. And obviously, you know you're not supposed to park on the grass, stay in the parking spaces. With respect to the storage shelter logic thing that the staff asked us to talk to you about, that you're using that for commercial or residential, and you said residential.
Yes.
And that's what you want it for. I think as a residential feature, we wouldn't regulate that in anybody else's yard, so I don't see any point in this. If it was, if it was commercial, it would be part of the commercial site plan, but since it isn't, frankly, I don't really know what to do with it. I wish our regulations did offer a little guidance. Maybe next time we got the hood open, we'll fix that, but...
So just for reference, if the board is amenable to allowing that structure to remain for residential use, on the staff memo under the proposed conditions of approval, should the board vote to approve this, the last note, it's on page three at the very top of the page. Staff's proposing a note be added to the plan that reads, "The shelter logic structure is limited to storage for the residential use only. No storage related to the HVAC business is permitted. Should storage become necessary for the HVAC business, applicant shall obtain site plan approval for a permanent structure." So that way, it allows him to proceed with the residential use, and should his business grow and he want to pursue a permanent structure, that would then enable him to do so.
Okay. That makes sense to me. Other comments or questions about what we have in front of us? Just sort of looking ahead, we've got to hold a public hearing and see if anybody wants to weigh in. Then we would consider whether we would waive full site plan review, and if so, what are the contours of that? You know, what, what are we waiving? What are we requiring? And what are we not blessing, if anything? And then we would consider whatever final disposition the board would like. Nelson, I feel like I cut you off, though.
Well, the only other questions I had had to do with drainage. We had, at one time, talked about our concerns with drainage of this site. And I don't know how that, that seems to have disappeared from the discussion here.
So drainage was a bigger concern when a structure was being proposed, but with no structure being proposed, he's not making any external changes to the property. And I believe the applicant's argument has been that previous uses have also been approved via waiver of full site plan process when they also made either no external changes, or I believe even the previous use of the Doggie Daycare Boarding Center had the astroturf surface in the backyard, but no drainage was required of them. So staff's opinion is with no external changes being proposed in this case, or even removal of the astroturf potentially by Mr. Burby for his own use, we're, we're amenable to the waiver of full site plan, knowing that any expansion in the future of an actual change outside would result in a full site plan where a drainage analysis is done.
Where does all that get documented, Robert?
Where does what get?
Well, all that you've just said.
There's several pieces of it that are in different places. I mean, obviously, we've got this plan that doesn't have the garage building on it, and so that's how we know that there's not the additional impervious surface. He's proposing essentially things that are already here. And I think that was part of Robert's note about it being an existing conditions plan. In terms of him having to come back forward, if he expands or does any other construction, that's all documented on our regulations. It's just a requirement for anybody. As to the removal of the astroturf, I don't know that that is represented here anywhere, although that was part of a discussion that the applicant said that he didn't want it, or maybe he's already gotten rid of it.
It's gone.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I thought I recalled, who said it's already out of here. Is there some other elements that, I want to make sure that it is documented correctly, but I don't know if there was something you wanted to see in writing that is different than that.
No, I, well, I'd forgotten about the garage being an issue with the drainage, and the cause of the issue with the drainage. I don't know that we've got a solution necessarily. What is this little L-shaped structure? It looks like it comes off the back of the house and runs up along the property line, and there's a... I don't know what it is.
On the left side of the property where you see the letter A, and then north of that?
Yeah, north of A. Or not north of A, actually east of A. Talking about...
Is it letter, letter A?
Funny little strip that runs up here.
Is there a letter A next to it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think that says existing fence? In the, in the legend?
Okay. So does the fence have kind of a weird...
Yeah, I don't know why that's a...
You're talking about the little jog out at the back of the house, like is it ways away or just a...
That, that was something that was attached to the house?
Right.
That is a, I'll call it a doghouse. I mean, it was a protrusion that was permitted for a rear entrance, for, it was actually a ramp for the dogs to come into the building.
So it's a, it's a doorway?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
So the doorway I got, it was, I was asking questions about this kind of structure that goes up the side here and then touches the house. Fence, but is it fencing in kind of a six-foot wide, 30-feet-long area, or what's...
No, it's, I think that could have been simplified if it was whited out. That's just a fence. It's a single, it's not six feet wide. It's just a inch fence. I don't know how to explain.
Is it up against the parking spaces, or a little bit away from the parking?
It's away from the parking spaces.
Okay, so the line to the left probably is the one that would get whited out, and the one to the right is the fence?
Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense.
If, if I may, never mind, I was looking at something different. Never mind.
All right. I think we'd want to get that, whatever that is, cleared up in a final...
I can take it down. Is that something I could remove?
Just identify it, is all I'm asking.
Oh, yeah, it's a fence.
Yeah, it looks like a dog run.
White fence.
What, but what... But what's showing on this plan is a very narrow piece with a line on top and a line on the bottom that goes across, and then a narrow, long strip that goes down
East.
By the parking.
Yeah, I see that. It's probably an error on the drawing.
Yeah, that's what it looks like to me when you compare to the satellite. It's just an error on the drawing. There, there is a fence there, but it doesn't make a loop and come back. It's, just goes to the property line and up, or towards the property line and, and then east, and then ends somewhere, so...
I didn't even notice it.
Nope.
Sorry.
That's why we have Nelson.
He'll notice that. Eight-by-eight shed, propane tanks, pile on sign, trash dumpster. Thank you for doing the labels with that.
There's another error on the print that I can admit to you that I just, that Robert Price had made me aware of. Number eight, there's actually a total of six parking spaces, not seven. I have to make that change. Do you have that in, in front of you where it says six?
We're showing six.
Okay, so I made that change. Sorry.
Yep. That's what it looks like to me. Thank you, by the way, for all the effort, and I know that you have had a longer process than you wanted. But the plan that we have in front of us now, notwithstanding that Nelson wants more things on it, is pretty clear compared to what we had before.
Much, much better.
Yep. Board members, would you like to have a public hearing, or would you like to take up the question of a waiver of full site plan review first? Let's do a public hearing. Does any abutters or citizens wish to weigh in? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, just that quick. Discussion of this waiver of full site plan review. What are your thoughts, folks?
Also move.
Is there a second for Lynn's motion?
Second.
Second by Counsel Healy. Discussion. I think in the context of waiving the full site plan review, I want to exercise the staff's note about storage, the shelter logic being residential only. I'd like to get the A fence corrected so that it's accurate. And then could we add either a, on the plan, a note that says, as a part of the full site plan review waiver, the board is not approving the location of the boundary lines or any intrusion, or, not intrusion, what do you call it, encroachment?
I'm, I'm okay with that.
Everybody's okay with that? Okay. Robert, is that enough information for you to know what we would want?
Yeah, I'll work it up.
Excellent. Okay, other discussion. Anybody else want to have any comments that they want to?
I just want to point out something I've just noticed here. The NRPC map, which shows a blue outline that I think in their view represents the property lines. Is that, is that true, Robert?
I, yeah, ideally. This, of course, being GIS, it may not necessarily be totally accurate. It may be, we just, we don't know without the actual boundary survey.
It's close.
It's not close.
This one's rounded on the side instead of angled off, but I would say that NRPC's sort of GIS maps, which come off of the tax maps, are notoriously sort of best guesses, so...
I, I would say that so, because there, there is an issue in the frontage if this, if this is more accurate. Not that I say it is. I'm just saying it's, points out to my concern in the beginning with the location of the front property corners. We don't know where they are.
So you're saying the DW Highway frontage that shows 106 feet is less than that if the blue line is accurate, because it's...
No, not, well, it's not the 106 feet part. It's the setback from the DW Highway part. If you look at where the blue line is, it, it's up near where the 20-foot parking and signage setback line is. If you, if you look where it, where it falls, it falls just, just a little bit west of the sign, the big free-standing sign on the NRPC map. And it's a long ways. It's maybe 25 feet away in the...
Can I share with someone's view? Is it possible? I've no, can I look it on with someone?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
I think that's what he's looking at, the blue, blue line outlining the property. You can take that.
So what Nelson's talking about, on the NRPC satellite map, if the blue line on DW Highway was your boundary, you would start there and measure your setbacks of 30 feet, or 20 feet, or whatever you needed to do. And obviously, that would intrude into your building. If on your map, the property line is about at the edge of pavement on DW Highway, and you measured from there. And, you know, the only issue, one, one of those things is accurate and the other one isn't. As to which one it is, we don't know. Looking at the satellite map and how it covers the other properties in the area, there's an awful lot of other people's properties that are similarly situated and on NRPC's map and sort of scooped into the DW Highway right-of-way. It wouldn't surprise me if the actual DW Highway right-of-way was that wide. But nonetheless, somehow in the past, there's been a lot of relief granted, because everybody's built into that right-of-way.
Don't we have an existing business that's been approved with all of this as it is? He's not changing anything to the front. He's not changing anything to the, the frontage.
And he's got no existing structures that were not part of a previous plan.
That's correct. So I don't have an issue with this.
Yeah. I don't know which one, which one is the boundary line, but I think that note that I talked about for Robert to put on there to say we're not blessing the boundary lines covers that.
Right.
You're, you're right. There is, whatever is here was part of an approved plan at one point. Nothing... Um, nothing is non-conforming and with that in mind, it's kind of what waiver of full site plans are for. Not getting caught in the mud. Okay. Motion and a second. We didn't vote on the motion yet.
Correct.
Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor of granting the waiver of full site plan review with the conditions discussed, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
One opposed?
Just to clarify which, what the reasoning is for the granting of.
Ah, yes, I'm sorry. We've got to reference which statutory criteria supports the waiver. We've got strict conformity would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant and the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations or specific circumstances relative to the site plan or conditions of the land and such site plan indicate the waiver probably carry out. We're going with the first one. You got it. Okay, so understanding that we're going with the first one, it was still a four, one, zero vote with Nelson Disco opposed to waiving full site plan review. With that in mind, is there further discussion with the applicant or is the board prepared to take final action?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to put forth a motion that the board grant final conditional approval based on the, um, footnotes within the staff memo unless otherwise specified.
Whatever we added here tonight?
Correct.
Is there a second for a pause motion? Second by Lynn Christensen, further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? One opposed? Any abstaining? Four, one, zero to grant conditional final approval. Thank you for going through a lot of work. I know it's frustrating. It would have been a lot easier if it was a bigger project and it supported financially doing all the, you know, regular engineering, but you went through it and ultimately got us the information we needed.
We do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Sorry, I got my calendar mixed up. I would have been here.
Have us the best of us.
Thank you.
Don't worry about it. Uh, okay. Item four on our agenda is Robert and Karen Curry. Review for acceptance and consideration of final approval for a two-lot subdivision. The parcel is located at Two Country Road in the R1 Residential by MAP and Aquifer Conservation Districts, Tax Map 3A, Lot sixty-five. Planning Board, Case Planning Board twenty-two-one dash twenty-five. Robert, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
Just by way of recap, to remind the board, and I'm sure Mr. Peterson will do the same thing. Uh, you may remember this property or this area from last year, I believe it was, where a lot was created on the opposite side of the existing house, so now the applicant is back to create one on the riverside.
Excellent. Thank you, Robert. Take away.
All right, good evening. Matt Peterson with Keach Norstrom Associates here representing the Currys with this proposed subdivision. Um, I'll just make the corrections of that because I would have presented, I would have thought it was a year ago, so I think it was two years ago before I.
Turn your microphone on.
It's green. Oh, there we go. Sorry about that. So, uh, yeah, I think it was about two and a half years ago that they brought this forward. I'm not sure why they didn't subdivide it at that time. This was given to me from Steve Keach to move this forward, so currently, you can see the overview. We are the lot just past the Salhegan River here. The existing house is right here. The subdivision that we subdivided off is this house right here.
Matt, I'm looking at the GIS lot and there's a blue line outlining. What lot is that?
Yep, I'll show you that right here.
Okay.
So based on the plan that you have there and the aerial that's there, the existing lot that's remaining is approximately six point two-three acres and the blue line that you have in your GIS goes along the Salhegan River here, comes back along here, comes up and then back along here. So we have the existing house sitting here. We'd like to subdivide that off and leave two point eight-seven-four acres. And then this lot here would be three point three-five-eight acres. This will require a shoreland permit because of its proximity to the river, so that'll have to go through the process before he can pull his building permit and that type of stuff. But a pretty straight shot through and just kind of, I think we all know where the economy is right now and house lots and stuff like that and getting an extra lot in town. There was a comment that I have to work with the owner on as far as the numbering, which was new to me in twenty-five years here, but because he took two and the other house took four, they're now going to have to give two to here. This is going to have to become four and this person's going to have to change to six, so I'm going to let him make that.
No, no two and a half?
Yeah, right?
Yeah.
One and a half.
We, we've done that.
Oh, really?
Oh, yes.
Two A and two B.
I've got fourteen and a half great stone.
Do you?
Interesting. I'll let the owner push back on that.
They can work it out.
Yeah, whatever it is, we have.
But, um, that's it. We also supplied the topo subdivision plan that shows you the test pit onsite and the 4K and we've sent this up for subdivision approval and stuff like that.
Excellent. We've got a handful of photographs in our package too. Is there anything in there that you want to call our attention to?
I don't think so. I just kind of like, it's old school now when we were doing this last year and a half and I like these pretty pictures of your location. You can kind of see if any Butters show up. It's easier to point to where they are, so.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Okay, uh, board members, the first task before us is to decide whether the application is complete.
Also move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and several seconds to find the application complete. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Five, zero, zero to find the application complete. Other than the potential for a sidewalk, there aren't any other waivers requested. Are there any Butters or interested citizens who wish to weigh in? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And, um, board members, uh, the usual part for a minor subdivision like this is to decide that a sidewalk isn't necessary as a part of that final vote so that we don't concede, pick that up as a waiver?
And I would suggest we do that.
Is there any further discussion about the project? Then is the board prepared to take final action? Somebody make a motion?
So move.
For conditional final approval subject to conditions in the staff memo?
Yep.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We'll count Paul as the second. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Five, zero, zero. Fairly quick. Thank you. Oh, no. Oh, no.
As long as it's not in Shaw's parking lot, you're okay.
Go log in and see if anybody's spending your money.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, the next item on our agenda is five, which is Robert Jones as the applicant and owner and Lloyd McLean as the owner. Review for acceptance and consideration of final approval for a lot line adjustment. The parcels are located at forty-seven Lamson Drive and fif, and nineteen Winchester Drive in the R4 Residential District. Tax map two B, Lot one seventy-five and one seventy-six. Case Planning Board twenty-two-one dash thirty. Robert, is there anything that we need to know before you hear from the applicant?
Just by way of quick summary, the reason for the lot line adjustment is there, as you see the plan, there is a stone wall that separates these two properties that the applicants have used as a kind of de facto boundary between them for, throughout time. Come to find out that that is not the actual boundary line, so they are seeking a lot line adjustment to basically make how they've treated it be the actual condition.
Excellent, thank you. All right, please introduce yourself and tell us what we got.
Sure, my, uh, Robert Jones, forty-seven Lamson Drive. Uh, that's actually not my residence. I live at one oh nine Patton Hill Road in Candia. Uh, my mother lives at the house. Uh, myself and my sister are the owners of the property and we are trying to do the lot line adjustment with our neighbor, the McLeans, uh, to that natural boundary that Robert described. I think you probably have the narrative and, uh, that I put together. I can go through that in a little bit more detail if you want, but we've approached the CBA already, got all of our variances regarding lot line, lot lot, uh, lot sizes in square footage as well as frontage and we're just ready to make it a little more formally approved.
All right. Board members, do you have any questions?
Yep.
Again, uh, first task before us again is completeness. What's the will of the board?
I'll second.
Motion and second to find the application complete. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Five, zero, zero to find the application complete. Uh, there are no requested waivers at this point, although we'll have to see if the discussion reveals any later on. Are there any Butters or interested citizens who wish to weigh in? There are none. We'll close that public hearing. And, board members, discussion or final action? Nelson?
I'll move approval of the plan.
Move approval subject to the conditions of the staff memo. Is there a second?
Yes, subject to the conditions of staff memo.
Is there a second for Nelson's motion?
Second. He won't.
Barbara be the second.
He's doling these out.
I know.
Yeah, I don't know how to do it.
He's got a checklist on his.
There you go.
You did one, now you get one.
Pass it around. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Five, zero, zero to grant conditional final approval. You're all set?
So a quick question. So I know there's a, a number of conditions in here. We have six months to get those done. Robert, should I just approach you at some point with some of the questions on the approvals or do we want to go through them tonight?
So the staff will work with you on those, but you'll get a letter from them that outlines what conditions you have to do and they'll help you resolve those and if it turns out that you need more than six months, extensions are pretty freely given, so.
Go to Robert.
I don't think we'll need that amount of time and I already have the list. It's just an opportunity for us to kind of review it a little bit.
Yep, absolutely. If there's any clarification that's needed, you can give me a call in the office. We'll sort it out or stop in, whatever's easier for you. But primarily, I think it's really just something for your surveyor to take care of with the plan and we'll go from there.
Yep, okay, excellent. Thank you. All right. That is item five on our agenda. Item six on our agenda is discussion and possible action regarding other items of concern. And I have a note on my, um, sheet here indicating that we've got a request to reinstate an expired plan for four oh eight DW highway. Robert, do you want to introduce that item?
Just one second. All right.
This one goes back about five years, so I don't know, Paul or?
Five years plus. Those few months.
Yeah.
So as some of you may know, um, Mr. Shuery here has, he owns the property that's directly across from the entrance to Twin Bridge Park, the building that about three years ago, I think, was, uh, under some remodeling and the town got kind of excited and towns residents got excited kind of seeing some of the, the lettering that was underneath and remembering old uses for the property. And then construction activity kind of came to a halt. So in meeting with Mr. Shuery recently about what happened, uh, and I, and he can explain some of this too if I'm misrepresenting. I believe he had financing secured from a bank for the project. Everything was underway. He had his permits in hand. He was starting the renovation work as everybody saw. And then the bank had rescinded his financing. So he tried to argue that, escalated up to the president of the bank, got nowhere, and that's where things kind of stalled out. He attempted to sell the property to no avail and, and very recently he secured financing from a, a family member, somebody in, in the family. So he decided to, okay, I've got my financing. I'm ready to go. I can now resume the project. So he went down to building to pull the permits to get going again. And he got tripped up because when he was before the planning board and got his original plan approved, it was signed by the board March first of twenty sixteen. And in my memo, I've got all this highlighting on it, but in summary, since the planning board does not assign, uh, specific conditions that result in active and substantial development, developers and, and property owners, they automatically get five years exemption from any changes in statute, in, um, zoning ordinances or site plan regulations during that time. That five years expired March first of twenty twenty-one. So at this point, Mr. Shuery is here tonight by staff's urging to request a view if he can go through the waiver of full site plan process with you again, not by changing the plan he had at all. He wants to continue using that plan. That expired a handful of months ago, uh, just to get it re-formalized and that way he can continue to pull his permits and get back on track with the renovation of the building.
Thank you for the introduction, Robert, and thank you for coming in. It's good to see you again. I wanted the restaurant to be open. I wanted some Lebanese food.
Every time you try to do something, something will come, stop. And we, we decided to start it before and then COVID hit, everybody shut down.
Turn your microphone on.
Hell one.
Microphone on.
The button on the microphone just says, where it says push?
It's okay, but just bring it closer to you.
Yeah, you know, everything go wrong. For the last year and a half, we stuck with the COVID. I could have started a long time ago. If I know that this has a limit, I could have did something different, but.
I understand. I understand.
And I'm asking tonight for your help to give me permission to keep going.
So you're planning on doing the same thing you talked to us about five years ago?
Same thing. I'm not changing anything.
Great.
Yep, so, uh, just to sort of.
And I'm ashamed to leave that building for so long this way.
Yeah.
Everybody hate me because of that.
Things happen. Things happen.
Mr. Shuery's, um, site plan approval from five years ago was one of the ones where we're helping him to, uh, make use of a very unorthodox site and we granted a lot of relief similar to the ones that we handled earlier tonight. Um, there really isn't enough parking and there's some other things, but it's a cool little site in the middle of town and walking to a restaurant is not terrible. So he had his approval. The passage of the five years puts us in a place to decide whether we would hold him up to our new regulations or essentially reapprove his plan under the old regulations, which to me seems like the fairer approach. You know, we, we've made a bunch of changes to setbacks and, and buffers and the way we approach those kinds of things. Doing a minor traffic study and doing those kinds, are all part of our new regulations that, um, it, with, with a fellow that's just trying to do what he was and had he started in February instead of July, wouldn't even be here. So, uh, if it is the will of the board, uh, he would come to us at one of our next meeting or two with his same plan to get a waiver of full site plan review and a reapproval, uh, if that's what we wish to do. The other choice is to say no to that and have him re-engineer his plan up to our current regs and see what happens.
That, that hardly seems fair.
It certainly doesn't seem fair to me either.
I think we let him go forward.
I agree. Robert, do you need an actual vote or just a consensus of the board?
Uh, since this is just a, it's a non-binding discussion really, not a formal item. So I think the general consensus around the board is that the board would be amenable to Mr. Shuery coming back as soon as he can with the formal waiver of full site plan process. We'll notice a hearing. We'll present the exact plan that was approved previously so that way the board can go through that process and get him back on track.
Does anybody object to doing that?
Nope.
No, no, I don't, but I do have a question for Robert. And can you outline for the board or summarize for the board what the deviations are between the old and the new regulations? What regulations are we wavering here, if you will?
I don't know that I can do that because the regulations were a complete overhaul
Yes.
in twenty nineteen.
That's why I can't do it either.
Right. So really, it would require him to, I mean, as a waiver anyway, he would still go through that same process of taking the plan and marking it up, which I believe he had significant assistance with last time. But the end result is going to be the same.
It won't make a difference because we're going to make a decision based on the plan and if we need him to make changes to it, we're going to review it and go through it at that point.
Yeah, or we would waive it all, the new regulations.
Right. We're just saying he can go forward with the plan.
I'd just like to know what they were, that's all. I just, I'm not objecting, I'm just saying we should know.
You were there, you should remember.
I asked, I asked Tim the same question yesterday just to kind of get my, my feet under me and, um, that's how come I knew that the, the traffic study was one of them and some of the buffer requirements.
And some of the parking.
I don't know what they all are though, but yeah, certainly the parking has changed.
Yeah.
Certainly the parking has changed.
I'd like to see it come forward again and let's go through it and see if we have any objections to it and, and
Yeah.
let's see if we can get the restaurant open and functioning.
Yeah, that's, that's my thought as well. I don't know that we'll have a kind of a line by line, here's all the regulations that are
Probably not.
changed or affected because it's very complicated.
I just thought if Robert could summarize it for us, it would be.
Not going to happen.
Yeah, I asked Tim and Tim couldn't do it either. You remember Desiree was the one, she was a board member and she kind of had to recuse herself to come help him fix up the drawing a little bit. Um, and thankful for that, but, uh, anyway. So we have a consensus of the board. Nobody objects to the idea of coming forward. We'll see in a couple of weeks. We'll get you stamped and approved and you can, um, uh, so that's the will of the board. And, um, then you'll be ready to get going again.
I appreciate it, but I don't know what I should do now.
So I'll, I'll reach out to you.
Talk, talk to, talk to Robert.
Okay.
I believe the first meeting in September is the first one we can actually get in, but we'll talk to you about getting the Butters list done, getting an application submitted. But we have all that stuff on file, so we can get it together.
Be patient. We'll get there.
You know, I've been waiting for those contractor from last year and finally they said, okay, we're going to start. There you go, we stuck again.
So you're lucky, Mike, contractors told me to go pound sand.
And now I got stuck again. What I should do now, I can say, you know.
Talk to Robert.
And I was talking to a good Rotarian friend of mine who told me. Can't help you.
Thank you.
We'll definitely get you going. I do look forward to your restaurant being open and trying some of the food.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, you're all set then?
You're all set.
And we'll see you in a few weeks. Uh, are there any other discussion or possible action regarding other? And we'll see you in a few weeks. Are there any other discussion or possible action regarding other items of concern for the board tonight?
Nope. I will move we approve the minutes as presented for Tuesday, July twentieth.
Is there a second to approve those minutes? Motion and a second to approve the minutes? Any comments or discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining?
Abstaining.
One abstention. Nelson Disco abstains. That's all the business on our agenda. Are we open for motion to adjourn?
So move.
Motion and a second to adjourn. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Five, zero, zero.
When does that happen?
It hasn't happened in a while.